Good evening and thank you for being here tonight at the last city council meeting for the people on the dais this evening. We've got a couple of things that I think I always wanted to say as we get ready to depart and transition to council, but for the interim, we've got a couple of administrative items to take care of, so if you would bear with us while we do that, and we'll get to the ceremonies as quickly as we can. Okay, at this time, if you would please rise and join us for the initiation of the pledge.
Lord, please be with us tonight as we make the transition to a new mayor and city council seats. It's been a privilege. You've guided us along the way, it's been a great eight years, and we appreciate that. Please be with our militaries, they serve here and abroad, and please be with our first responders, they protect us and keep us safe. In your name we pray, amen.
.......................................
.........
Councilmember Dory. Demott, here. Golding, here. Hoffman, here. Nichols.
Here.
Volosang.
Here.
Mayor Latham.
Here. And item two eighteen, please.
I move that we approve the minutes of the executive session of the city council meeting held on November 2nd, 2020 regarding litigation.
Second.
Got a motion second and discussion by the council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you give your call, please?
Governor Demott.
Yes.
Golding.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Volosang.
Yes.
Mayor Latham.
Yes. And one, two, nineteen, please.
I move that we approve the minutes of the regular council meeting held on November 2nd, 2020.
Second.
Got a motion second and to be by the council? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? By your action motion carries, and two twenty, please.
I move that we approve the minutes of the council briefing held on November 9th, 2020.
Second.
Got a motion second and discussion to be by the council? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? By your action motion carries. Announcements, Ms. Golding.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to let everybody know that Deck the Chairs is going to be opening up this Saturday, December 1st, at four o'clock, with the first post win symphony, so I hope you all come out. Should be a great event this year, something happy and fun for us to look forward to. Also, some of you may know I've been working on pedestrian safety on Coman Road, and wanted to give you an update that the City of Jacksonville has said that they will be pouring concrete starting November 30th for the 15th Avenue North pedestrian crossing. So I'm really excited about that, and they expect to have the pedestrian crossing done by the end of the year. So that's great news. And then I also want to just say a few words, thank Mayor Latham for his service to our community for the last eight years. Thank you for your leadership and your dedication, and you've dealt with some big challenges in your eight years, and so we are very grateful for everything that you've done. And then Chris, well, I was gonna say Keith, but he isn't here, but Chris and Jill, thank you both so much for your eight years of service as well. And Chris, I look forward to working with you as mayor, and the new council members, I look forward to working with all of you as well.
Thank you. Seeing, anyone else? Okay, then we're gonna go ahead and move forward to person four. I've got a couple of cards, first, Mr. Greg Huntington. Madam Clerk, if you'd come forth, give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes, sir.
Can you hear me? I thought that was good, Doc. At later date, you're gonna have to explain to the nickname to Maggie, I don't have time to do that. I'll do my best to be brief and amazing. Greg Huntington, with Waste Management, formerly Advanced Spoleton, 90 Fort Wade Road, Panetta Florida, 3208 point. I first just wanted to say thank you to the existing council members for your public service. That's no easy task. It's no easy task to run through our office, raise, you know, funds, and then also sit and be good government, if that's what you did, and so I'd say thank you. Mayor Latham and I have sat on a board together at National Waste Recycling Association, a privilege working with you there. Councilman Volosang, we share a love for Cincinnati High School football, as well as the Bengals. So thank you, and then congratulations to the incoming council members in winning your election. I just wanted to briefly give an update on the acquisition of Advanced Spolets by Waste Management. It became official on October 30th. It's been a long time coming. It's the largest deal in our industry history, it's a $5 billion deal. It took over a year and a half, COVID didn't help, the DOJ was involved, and as you can imagine, whenever you're under that cloud for so long, you can lose momentum and morale. But now that Waste Management is at the helm, you should see an uptick in your service. And, you know, trucks, we have rental trucks to come in and support our park fleet as needed. Things will improve, and I just wanted to, again, take this time to say thank you to the city, because we greatly appreciate the partnership that we share with you in providing these critical environmental services. And the way the contract's designed is that whenever you have a service for land issue, this will be the last thing I say, I don't want to, is you're supposed to call us at a dedicated phone number, which is 904-338-9700. That's 904-338-9700. Don't call your public works partner, even though they're phenomenal, they're a great organization, they'll take your call. But we're supposed to take the call first, and we've already met with them, and we met with the city manager, so that's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate it. Appreciate it. Julie Malmstrom, if you'd like to come forth, give us your name and address, you have three minutes, ma'am.
I'd be happy to talk to you this minute. Is this something somewhat related to the topic on the agenda about the scooters, electric scooters and private, like bicycles, skateboards, pedestrians on First and Second Street? These of third, it's just to try to drive without getting, and it just, I know it's starting to phase out of the summer season, it's gonna be a veteran's game, I'm gonna be off your stool, I couldn't go to the road, I don't wanna get any better, this was a broad daylight. So it's just something to think about. I know there's supposed to be about one-way streets and things like that, so just put for thought if you're bringing up that other topic about scooters, that's it.
Thanks, Julie. And did anybody else want to address the council from the floor? Okay. Then we're gonna move forward to two twenty-one, and Mr. Stephanopoulos, do you have an announcement to make about the elections?
I do, Mayor, this first item is looking for the city council to adopt the declaration of election results as issued by the Duval County Canvas Inc. Board. This is effectively accepting the certification of our election results from November 3rd.
Okay, can I get a motion on the first one, please?
I move that we adopt the declaration of election results as issued by the Duval County Canvas Inc. Board and certified by the State of Florida for the City of Jacksonville Beach general election held on November 3rd, 2020.
Second.
Got a motion second and to be by the council? Seeing none, all in favor, please?
Governor Golding.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yep.
Nichols.
Yes.
Volosang.
Yes.
Demott.
Yes.
Mayor Latham.
Yes. And item two twenty-two is something that I'm not gonna do, this is something that you're gonna leave, Mr. Stephanopoulos, right?
Actually, no, I thought we were going to have the mayor do the resolutions for the outgoing council.
Is that what you're gonna do?
Yeah. That's what we want to do.
Mayor, we don't need to read them twice, if you just want to accept, I'm sure that they're the same.
Are they all the same?
More of them.
We're good, Madam Clerk, let's start with Phillip.
Whereas Phillip M. Volosang was elected to the office of City Council Member, Seat Two at Large, on November 6th, 2012, and subsequently re-elected for a second term on November 8th, 2016, serving citizens of Jacksonville Beach for eight consecutive years. And whereas Council Member Volosang took his responsibility very seriously by diligently preparing the council meetings and workshops and making sound decisions for the benefit of citizens. And whereas City Council Member Volosang was a key leader who strongly focused on public safety for first responders and for citizens. And whereas Council Member Volosang was instrumental in improving the quality of life for Jacksonville Beach residents by approving funding and participating in the planning of numerous initiatives, including the following: implementing infrastructure improvements, improving pedestrian safety, increasing the homestead exemption for low-income seniors, installing a beach's energy responder outage management system, resulting in more efficient outage responses, recruiting and selecting for the new city manager and in-house city attorney, establishing a paid department management program, upgrading the city's radio system and video monitoring system for the downtown and redevelopment districts to enhance the safety of citizens, renovating the Jacksonville Beach Golf Club with upgraded turf and new amenities to improve playability and enhance the patrons' experience, completing shore protection projects and rebuilding our new walkovers, protecting the environment and mitigating damage to our community from tropical storms, constructing a skate park at South Beach Park, which is recognized as one of the best skate parks in Florida, establishing and continuing to support the community assisted police effort, which transformed high-prime areas into safe and secure neighborhoods, making the police department a city priority to achieve and maintain law enforcement accreditation through CalADA. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Jacksonville Beach, Florida, congratulates Phillip M. Volosang for excellent service and authorizes resolution of esteem. William C. Latham.
I'll be brief, I didn't think this was gonna be emotional, but it actually is, it meant a lot for eight years. Couldn't have done it without my colleagues, and we ran on something that was pretty important and turned the city around and get it moving in the right direction. I really do, in my heart of hearts, believe that we've done that and are passing a good legacy on to the next young men to take our seats. So I really do appreciate this city, I'm here for good. I'll be back when there's issues that I need to get involved in, but this has been, definitely getting involved in politics wasn't something I anticipated doing, but it was definitely worth it, and I have enjoyed every minute of it, so thank you, everybody.
Whereas Christine H. Hoffman was elected to the office of Council Member, Seat One at Large, on November 6th, 2012, and subsequently re-elected for a second term on November 8th, 2016, serving the citizens of Jacksonville Beach for eight consecutive years. And whereas Council Member Hoffman served as Mayor Pro-Tam from December 3rd, 2018 to November 16th, 2020. And whereas Council Member Hoffman served on the General Police Pension Board from February 12th, 2013 to November 16th, 2020. And whereas Council Member Hoffman was a key leader who focused strongly on the concerns of the community and the community outreach. And whereas Council Member Hoffman was instrumental in improving the quality of life for Jacksonville Beach residents by approving funding and participating in the planning of numerous initiatives, including the following: implementing infrastru-
Yada, yada, yada.
Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Jacksonville Beach, Florida congratulates Christine H. Hoffman for excellent service and authorizes this resolution of esteem. William C. Latham, Mayor.
I am gonna go ahead and read this one. This is the resolution of the scheme for Mayor William C. Latham. Whereas William C. Latham was elected to the office of Mayor on November 6th, 2012, and subsequently re-elected for a second term on November 8th, 2016, serving citizens of Jacksonville Beach for eight consecutive years. And whereas William C. Latham was a dedicated leader who focused strongly on the community and public safety. And whereas William C. Latham was a strong advocate of home rule and was a five-time awardee of the Florida League of Cities Home Rule Hero Award. And whereas William C. Latham served on the Florida League of Mayor's Board of Directors for four years. And whereas William C. Latham served on the Executive Board of the North Florida Transportation Planning Organization, representing all three beach cities from 2013 to 2020. And whereas William C. Latham was instrumental in improving the quality of life for Jacksonville Beach residents by approving funding and participating in the planning of numerous initiatives, including the following: I think these are different, so I'm gonna go ahead and read them. Leading the city to become debt-free on October 1st, 2020, retiring $42 million in debt in eight years, successfully lobbying Governor Scott, FDOP Secretary Prasad, and FDOP District Secretary Evans for $30 million used for drainage improvements in Jacksonville Beach and Neptun Beach. Leading the city through hurricanes Hermine, Matthew, Irma, and Dorian, and the global pandemic of 2020, representing Jacksonville Beach on the national stage during the pandemic and four hurricanes on national news, news stations, Fox News Channel, CNN, The Weather Channel, MSNBC, and ABC. Increasing the homestead exemption for low-income seniors, upgrading the city's radio system and video monitoring system for the downtown and redevelopment districts to enhance the safety of its citizens, renovating the Jacksonville Beach Golf Club with upgraded turf and new amenities to improve playability and enhance the patrons' experience, completing shore protection projects and rebuilding our new walkovers, protecting the environment and mitigating damage to our community from tropical storms, constructing a skate park at South Beach Park, which is recognized as one of the best skate parks in Florida, establishing and continuing to support the community assisted policing effort, which transforms high-prime areas into safe and secure neighborhoods and double the number of police downtown, riding with police regularly and making the police department a city priority for any necessary resources, and to achieve and maintain law enforcement accreditation through CalADA, establishing Jacksonville Beach as a Purple Heart City. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Jacksonville Beach, Florida congratulates William C. Latham for his exemplary service and authorizes this resolution of esteem. Dated on the 10th day of November 2020, Christine H. Hoffman, Mayor Pro-Tam. We have a few more things for you. I have the distinct honor of presenting Mayor Latham with the gavel that he used throughout his eight years here as head of the city. So you'll see that the gavel is not very well-worn or dented or cracked, because it, to his great credit, he really increased the professionalism of his body. He ran a very good, tight meeting, giving people the opportunity to speak, but with maintaining decorum in our bodies. And really, we had a very continual group here, and we had generally very happy citizens, so he didn't have to bang it very often. Congratulations, hopefully that good luck.
Charlie, I took an administrative delivery. There was one wave maker left in the previous report, the wave maker board. And when people said, well, what should we do with it? And I said, anytime you have an individual who serves as mayor for eight consecutive years and contributes as much to the community as the mayor has, just the fact that you've been a honorable hero for five years, and the relationship that you forged with Cal Addison for the benefit of this community is tremendous, and all of the tax and profit under your leadership during that eight-year window. So I'd like to present you with a wave maker board.
Try to keep these kind of in short, because I know we have some exciting things about to happen. I do want to say, for the sake of transparency, that my last day of waste management was last week, and I'm proud to announce publicly that Monday of next week, I'll report as the Director of Environmental Services at Lake County. I'm gonna stay in Jacksonville Beach, thanks to NIB, we got a 30-minute community makeup in spring, so I'm excited to take that new challenge on. Just wanted to do a few thank yous real quick. First and foremost, to my wife, for her love and support, but also for taking her dying beaches, Council on Haiti, and turning it into a thriving, rock-solid nonprofit that serving our senior community. We went from one broken-down van to three reliable vehicles, the strong board of directors, and a world-class executive director, Lori Anderson, from the beach.
Mission House.
Mission House, thank you, sorry, Lori, out there. I'll thank my mom, Elaine, and my daughters Katie and Kelly for their love and support, especially during the campaigns. I want to thank my dad, Bill Latham, the first mayor of Jacksonville Beach, for being a greatest role model in history. Thanks to my friend Michael Bruce, who's over there taking my picture. Michael's been one of my best friends for almost 40 years, and was my first campaign candidate. We operate under what's called a council manager form of government. Our city manager is our CEO, he manages the day-to-day activities, manages the staff, and manages the goals that are provided by the council. The council is an organization that provides guidance, direction, and goals. And I want to take just a minute to talk about some of the people that have done so much for the city that normally kind of we just pass by real quick. For the first four years of our term, George Forbes, Karen Nelson, Gary Royal, Trish Roberts, Gary Meders, Bruce Thomason, Pat Dooley, Gary Fraser, and Sherry Gossett, all served as members of that team to get things done and drove most of the activity that took place in our city and made it what it is today. Our new staff, Mike Stephanopoulos, Karen Nelson, Ashley Gossett, Chris Ambrosio, Jason Petee, Jean Paul Smith, and Chris Wright, bring so much to the table, and I'm so excited we're leading such a talented group of folks to take over the reins of the machine. The people I just named, those are the heroes of Jacksonville Beach, those are the people that have worked so hard behind the scenes. You get all the work done, it's easy to stand back and talk about what you want to see happen, but it takes a heck of a lot more of effort to get it done, so if you would please join me in a round of applause for our speakers. I also want to recognize our former council members, and these are the ones that served with us. Tommy Taylor, Janelle Wilson, Bruce Thomason, Lee Buck, and Steve Hartman. I'm proud of what we've been able to accomplish, especially when we consider the four hurricanes and the global pandemic that interrupted our work. We're a debt-free city, we're better off than we were eight years ago, and it's because of everybody that's here today, and all the staff that worked so hard to make it happen. As my watch comes to an end, I'd like to thank the citizens of Jacksonville Beach for having faith to elect me not once, but twice. And to Mayor-elect Hoffman and the new City Council, I want to thank you for your willingness to serve our citizens, and I wish each and every one of you the great luck in Jacksonville Beach. Thank you. You ready to clear up here? You can cross mine. Okay, our next ten items, the oath of office for our new office. So at this time, I guess Phil and I'll step down?
Yes, if the old council could step down, and I believe we will start the oath of office with the office of Mayor, Colonel Chris Hoffman.
I, Christine H. Hoffman.
I, Christine H. Hoffman, do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States. Obey the laws of the state of Florida. Obey the laws of the state of Florida. And uphold the ordinances. And uphold the ordinances. And policies of the City of Jacksonville Beach. And policies of the City of Jacksonville Beach. And I will faithfully. And I will faithfully. And impartially. And impartially. Perform the duties. Perform the duties. For the office of Mayor. Of the office of Mayor. To the best of my will. To the best of my will. To my will. Thank you.
Can I raise your right hand, please? I, Fernando Beza.
I, Fernando Beza.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
Obey the laws of the state of Florida.
Obey the laws of the state of Florida.
And uphold the ordinances.
And uphold the ordinances.
And policies.
And policies.
Of the City of Jacksonville Beach.
The City of Jacksonville Beach.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
For the office of council member.
The office of council member.
Seat One at Large.
Seat One at Large.
To the best of my will.
To the best of my will.
Subway to life.
I, Daniel A. Janson.
I, Daniel A. Janson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
Obey the laws of the state of Florida.
Obey the laws of the state of Florida.
And uphold the ordinances.
And uphold the ordinances.
And the policies of the City of Jacksonville Beach.
And the policies of the City of Jacksonville Beach.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
For the office of council. Of the office of councilmember.
Of the office of councilmember.
Seat two at large.
Seat two at large.
To the best of my will.
To the best of my will.
Congratulations.
I, Eugene Chester Stokes III.
I, Eugene Chester Stokes III.
Do some we swear.
Do some we swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
Obey the laws of the state of Florida.
Obey the laws of the state of Florida.
And uphold the ordinances.
And uphold the ordinances.
And the policies.
And the policies.
Of the city of Jacksonville Beach.
Of the city of Jacksonville Beach.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of the office of councilmember.
Of the office of councilmember.
Seat three at large.
Seat three at large.
To the best of my will.
To the best of my will.
Congratulations.
So at this time, we're going to go ahead and start our regular business meeting. I promised it will be brief. They give us a little bit of a running start into learning how to handle the buttons up here and indoctrinate the new council. So if you need to leave, please feel free. But if you'd like to stay and watch us at work, you're welcome to do that. And I do look at that, I think this will be pretty short. Before the business meeting begins, I wanted to thank our outgoing members. That's mine for the photo. 24 years of collective service walks out the door with those three members. And I want to thank all of the families and everyone who came out here tonight. To my colleagues, if you guys could just go ahead and keep it down, we are having a meeting after. To my colleagues, I just wanted to say that we bring seven unique perspectives to the council, but we do have some similarities. And I just wanted to point out a few things to explain the rhythm and text you've been getting over the past couple of days. Among this council, we have two Fletcher diplomas, two U.N.F. degrees, three U.F. degrees, two Auburn degrees, three master's degrees, one Ph.D., eight kids, one fact, only two of us have children, four dogs, four cats, four spouses, two sets of members who have run against each other in past elections, and none of us are Jacksonville Beach natives. My favorite fact of all is that at least one of us, at least one member has served on each of our boards, the Planning Commission, the Board of Adjustment, the CRAA, and the Pension Boards. What we all have in common is that we bring the trust of the voters in Jacksonville Beach. But no matter how many votes we got, or we're just now certified, we all have one vote when we're on this side of the dais. And that means we need to collaborate, compromise, and collectively as a body, do the best that we can do for the community that we represent. I'm looking forward to working with all of you towards that end and ask that you show up, do the work, ask the hard questions for as long as we are given this honor to serve our community. Ready? All this meeting is over. Thank you, I felt good. All right, Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call?
Councilor Demont.
Here.
Golding, here. Janson.
Here.
Mesa.
Here.
Nichols.
Yes.
Stokes.
Here.
Mayor Hoffman.
Here. Our first order of business is to appoint the Mayor Pro Tem, and this is a position that is appointed by the members of the City Council for someone to serve as the mayor for the time and to serve in absence, in my absence, and to represent the city when I'm unavailable to do so. So let's open the floor for nominations. Councilmember Golding?
Thank you, Mayor Hoffman. You're welcome. Got to get used to saying that. I would like to nominate Georgia Demont for Mayor Pro Tem. And for the benefit of the new councilmembers, I wanted to mention a few things about why I'm nominating Councilmember Demont. For the two years she's served on the City Council, she has been dedicated and committed to serving the community. In addition to her council duties, she has served on the pension board. She's attended, now listen to this, all but one of the numerous council meetings, briefings, and community conversations over the last two years. And yes, I have kept track of that. And that's pretty monumental because that's over 100 meetings. And so she's definitely been very dedicated. She's also attended numerous community events and shown that she has a deep commitment to our community. She's not, also, communication has been a priority for this council. And one of the things that she's done in her two years as a councilmember is she has a monthly newsletter that she sends out to her constituents. And I think that's pretty amazing. She's leading by example. And for all these reasons, I support Ms. Demont, and I believe she's uniquely qualified and has the deep commitment to fill her role.
Are there any other nominations, Ms. Demont?
Thank you. That was wonderful you said, Sandy, but I would like to decline the nomination, and I'd like to nominate you to be Mayor Pro Tem. Sandy has been well-respected, well-known, very active in the community for far longer than I have. I'm often at Calcom meetings and stuff you've gone to, you've been going to them for a very long time. So you've been very active, you've been involved to understand what our boards do. Laura, we've been very active on the council the last two years, and I've been in meetings with you on our board. And I know that you can run, if needed, a very tight and controlled meeting and get things done. So you're very effective and efficient when it comes to meeting management. Like I said, you are well-respected and very indeed, you know, you have a far greater depth of knowledge than I do. And finally, I enjoy your enthusiasm. So I nominate Sandy.
Okay, Ms. Golding, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I guess I do.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Mr. Janson?
Yes, I nominate Corey Nichols. I didn't come prepared with a complete statement of his.
And that's okay.
However, I do know that he's participated in the CRAA, and of course, he's not council as well. So maybe we can split it in the middle. I'm not sure. Goodbye.
Mr. Nichols, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Okay. Any other nominations? So what we'll do is have close the floor for nominations, and the City Clerk will do a roll call and just express your vote during the roll call, and whoever wins will lead the new Mayor Pro Tem.
Councilor Demont. Councilmember Golding. Councilmember Golding. Golding. Councilor Janson.
Councilmember Nichols.
Councilor Mesa.
Mr. Nichols.
Councilmember Nichols.
Nichols.
Councilor Stokes.
Councilmember Nichols.
Mayor Hoffman.
Councilman Nichols. All right, Corey Nichols wins Mayor Pro Tem. We're going to stay seated where we are right now, and we'll adjust the seating at the next meeting. Okay, next order of business, now that you're the Mayor Pro Tem, if you really pay attention, be ready to read the motions. We have item number 20-225.
I move that we accept the financial report through the month of October 2020.
Is there a second? Second? Is there any update from the city staff? I guess I should have asked her that first.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. For the benefit of the new councilmembers, the staff is required by charter on a monthly basis to present financial information to the City Council for its consideration. The CFO has a template that she has been using, or the department has been using for a number of years, to provide that information to you all. So this is a document that you will see on a monthly basis for your consideration. With that being said, I would like CFO Gossip to just say a few words with regards to the information that is contained in this report for your benefit.
Hello, I'm CFO Gossip, and I wanted to take a minute to give you kind of a quick overview of the format of the monthly financial statements. These are prepared on a cash basis, each year, and each month is a cumulative sum of the progress of the fiscal year. The exhibit will show the revenue and spending progress and a comparison to the same time in the prior year. So the first and second exhibits of this statement are for the city's general fund. The revenues are presented by an activity type, and the expenses are presented by the department. And exhibit three and four, those are the provisions by the energy fund, and those are presented as presented at a summary fund level. Exhibit five and six show the special event fund at hand at the summary fund level. The seventh exhibit is provided, kind of year-to-date budget to actual for all of the funds, and use you in that income or loss that they retire for each individual fund. And the last two pages of this meeting are the actual investments are both tight and summary. And as always, I'm available for instructions that you might have for third and fourth annual financial statements.
Are there any questions from the council? Seeing an unroll call, please?
Go ahead and motion first.
Oh, she did it.
Okay, sorry.
Way to be honest, I'm married. Okay, Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Janson?
Yes.
Mesa?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
Demont?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman? Yes. Motion carries. The next item, 226, do you want to do a petition from the city staff?
Yes, Mayor, very quickly, this is seeking award of RFP 09-1920 to a company known as TC Delivers. Specifically, this is to cover printing and mailing of utility bills and notices that we do through Beaches Energy Services. There was a process that the city went through in order to come to this recommendation, and we also have the CFO here if you have any questions.
Mayor Pro Tem, can we have a motion?
I move that we award RFP number 091920 to TC Delivers for invoice printing and mailing services and approve a one-year contract that may be extended for four additional one-year terms.
Second. Any discussion or questions from the council? I do not see any lights. City Clerk, can we get a roll call?
Councilor Janson?
Yes.
Mesa?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
Demont?
Yes.
Golding?
Yes.
Mayor Latham.
I'm sorry. Mayor. I knew I was going to do that. Mayor Hoffman, yes. Okay, motion carries. The next item, 227, city staff.
Yes, 227 is an item for Beaches Energy Services. They are looking to award Task Order 2 to a company known as Telvent USA, which provides technical support and training for the SCADA operators for our outage management software. We have Matt Sealy representing Beaches Energy Services in the event that council has any questions.
Mayor Pro Tem, can we have a motion?
Yes, I move that we approve Task Order 2 of the Extended Support and Maintenance Services Agreement with Telvent USA LLC and approve Telvent USA LLC as the sole service vendor.
Second. Is there any discussion or questions from the council? Seeing done, Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call?
Councilor Mesa?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
Demont?
Yes.
Golding?
Yes.
Janson?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes. Okay, final order of business. I told you guys it would be fast. Madam Clerk, will you read the ordinance by title?
An ordinance of the City of Jacksonville Beach, Florida, City Council, creating section 28-11, regulation of commercial motor vehicle parking in chapter 28, article 1 of the City of Jacksonville Beach Code of Ordinances, to regulate parking of commercial motor vehicles on specific roadways in the city's downtown business district, provided for legislative findings, repeal conflicting ordinances, severability, codification, and ineffectivity.
This ordinance is before the council for a public hearing and consideration on its second reading. I will now open the public hearing on ordinance number 2020-8152. Have there been any comment cards received for this? These were the earlier ones. Are these ones you pointed? Okay, that's what that one's here and did. Any public comment received that needs to be recorded?
No, ma'am.
Anyone in the audience to speak in favor of the ordinance? Anyone to speak in opposition of the ordinance? Okay, public hearing closed. And Mayor Pro Tem, can we have a motion to adopt the ordinance?
I move that we adopt ordinance number 2020-8152 on the second reading, amending chapter 28 of the city code of ordinance by creating a new section, 2811, restrictions and regulations of commercial motor vehicles in the downtown business district.
Second. All right, first on the queue, Mr. Mesa?
I just have a couple of questions. On the waiver of restrictions, the city manager can waive the restriction. Does this? Question for the city manager is, does this pertain to like festivals down here, downtown? Deck-to-chairs, when people are parked trying to deliver and festivals nights? And the second question is, the citation that is given to the driver, if it's given, is it to the driver or to the company?
I'll let Mr. Man address those questions since he's been our department director who has shepherded this through the process.
Bill Man, Department Development Director. The first question was, I'm sorry.
It was in relation to Lakewood Plaza, whenever there's festivals, is that when you could waive?
Yes, sir, that type of special event or even the larger special events, where we set up a bigger perimeter than they did either, like the airshow was probably the biggest perimeter we set up. So yes, there's for those festivals. And for potentially unforeseen conditions that we may not be aware of, it's one given the ability to administer and include that. And the second one concerning the citations, does Mark Evans here? No, I think Mark, I believe it goes to the driver.
I believe that's correct.
Okay. It would be handled locally, it's not a uniform traffic citation. It would be handled through us, and if there's any adjudication, it would go through the administrator.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Gary, it's disorienting that the holdings are still on here too. Pretty intense, but I don't see any lights, so I'm going to assume we're ready for the vote. Now, Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call?
Councilor Nichols?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
Demont?
Yes.
Golding?
Yes.
Janson?
Yes.
Mesa?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes. That was our final order of business, so this meeting is adjourned.